Shields. I think that Shields is pretty impressive.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the October 1st, 2012 Waschuggle City Council Meeting and ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rose, could we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. Our first item, I have a proclamation for National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you for, to Councilmember McDaniel, for asking that we find one appropriate. This is a proclamation, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2012. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas breast cancer claims the life of almost forty thousand U.S. women a year, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating citizens about the importance of early detection of breast cancer through mammography and other methods, and whereas detection of breast cancer at an early age greatly improves the chances for successful treatment and survival, and whereas breast cancer death rates are declining due to improved detection and treatment, and whereas detection and treatment of breast cancer have improved thanks to research, now therefore I, Sean Gard, Mayor of Waschuggle, do hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Accordingly, I urge all citizens and their families to learn the facts about mammography and the importance of early detection. I encourage our community to commend this observance to our citizens, cancer researchers, and healthcare providers, and to participate in Breast Cancer Awareness Month activities. You're very welcome. Rose, do we have any correspondence?
No.
Okay. We're at the first opportunity for any members of the public that would like to address council. Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll go to the consent agenda. This evening, our consent agenda consists of four items. Our council minutes of September 17th, 2012, our workshop minutes of September 24th, 2012, our regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $380,049.71, and Agenda Bill 6112, an authorization to the mayor to sign the Gorge Towns to Trails Vision Statement.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Dave?
I hate to spoil the party. I'd like to pull Agenda Item D for discussion, please.
With that modification, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda Items A, B, and C as read.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Okay, Agenda Bill 6212, authorizing the mayor to sign the Gorge Towns to Trails Vision Statement. Jim?
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Staff is submitting a request from the Friends of the Columbia River Gorge for the city of Waschuggle to support the Gorge Town to Trails Connecting Communities to Trails program. As a supporter, the city would permit Friends of the Columbia River Gorge to list the city as a Gorge Towns to Trail supporter and keep up to date with the program's progress and meetings. The park board has unanimously voted to support this program, and the recommended action is to authorize the mayor to sign the Friends of the Columbia River Gorge to Trails Vision Statement.
Thank you, Jim. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to take issue with this particular proposal, and not because the staff hasn't done a lot of good work on it. I appreciate everything you've done. Environmentalist proposals generally look good on their face, as this one does. I urge my colleagues and the voters of Waschuggle, however, to look more deeply into the proposal. This proposal will eventually result in two things. First, taking more land out of economically productive use, and second, putting more land under federal control. This federal encroachment upon private and state and local land began under President Theodore Roosevelt over a hundred years ago, and has accelerated in recent years. Such efforts contradict the spirit of our Constitution, particularly the goal of protecting and preserving private property. They also remove public land from state and local control. In 1818, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in U.S. versus Bevins that a state's control of land within its borders is an essential part of the state's sovereignty. Projects such as this involving the use of federal funds to acquire and manage non-federal land contravene state sovereignty. The underlying assumption of these acquisitions is that non-federal entities are less capable of managing land for public use. The facts suggest otherwise. Both the Congressional Budget Office and the U.S. General Accounting Office have documented serious mismanagement by the four federal agencies who manage the bulk of federal land. Those four agencies are the Bureau of Land Management, Fish and Wildlife Service, Forest Service, and the National Park Service. They sometimes can't even agree on how much land they control. Why we would wish to turn over more land to such mismanagement is beyond me. The federal government already controls nearly one-third of the land in the country. The feds control over fifty percent of the land in five states, and over twenty-five percent of the land in another seven states. In Nevada, they control nearly ninety percent. I believe the figure is eighty-six point two or four, depending on your source. And in Washington, nearly thirty-three percent. I believe the figure here is thirty-two point eight percent. State and local governments, some of them using public-private partnerships, are doing a better job of managing land use for public use. They earn profits from mining, logging, grazing, and recreational activities on the public land that they manage. On a per-acre basis, they make five to ten times what the two largest federal land management agencies make, and spend twenty to fifty percent less than the feds spend managing that land. It's time to reverse the centralization of control of land at the federal level in this country and restore management of public land to state and local governments. They are better qualified to manage public land by virtue of their proximity and responsiveness to citizens who live in areas adjoining public land. And if government doesn't need the land, they should leave it under private ownership. I propose to begin the battle to stop the insatiable appetite of the federal government to encroach upon our land, and ask my colleagues to join me. To my colleagues on this council, I say, when history looks back on the rollback of federal land encroachment, which it will someday, let it note that it began here, tonight, in Waschuggle, with your vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Counsel? Brett?
I have a couple of questions. Who actually will control the trail?
I don't know the answer to that question at this time. I could look at some, do some research, but I'm not exactly sure.
I couldn't see it in the materials.
I don't know if it would be the gorge, the Friends of the Columbia River Gorge, or if it would be the Forest Service. I don't know at this point, but I could...
It could be the Gorge Commission is also another entity created by a state compact between the two states. Now, the trail's going to run through areas that I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, it's going to run through areas that's really not another viable use for them. Maybe there'll be a couple of extra trees, or they could plant a few more, you know, tomatoes on the land, but there's really no other viable use for where the trail's going to go that I could see. Would that be a fair statement?
That may be the case in some areas. I'm not sure. It's a pretty long trail, so I couldn't speak to the accuracy of that statement.
Well, as someone in my earlier life, I've been in litigation with the Friends of the Gorge and the Gorge Commission in a fairly well-known case around years ago. And, you know, I'm, you know, a little, I don't know what the correct word is, but I look, I examine a little bit when they come forward with a proposal like this, but I think this is a good proposal and good for the city, and I'm going to support it.
Paul? Just a little bit of information. Parts of the trails will be within city limits, like, for instance, the Dyke Trail. There's also an intention to connect Lackamas Lake down their new trail system, so those would be in city or county control. There's a big Rails to Trails project that would connect up in Clickitat County, and that's a county project. Obviously, anything in the city limits of Stevenson or Lyle would be city limits. Those portions that are in the gorge management area, which of course excludes those municipalities, would be under the direction of the Forest Service, which is the federal agency which is tasked with administering the Gorge Scenic Act. That's it.
Could I ask a follow-up question? Would the remainder of the, would the remainder of the trail be within national forest lands? Is that the reason why the Forest Service...
Well, either that or on easements on private land. For instance, Longview Fiber owns a bunch of land, and they've given some interest in granting easements for trails, but they're not interested in selling and having it become park service land. Some of the trail would actually be outside the gorge area scenic boundary, and so the, I don't know what, the Forest Service would not have authority over that.
Who's going to be responsible for maintaining it?
Well, pretty, the Forest Service does some of that, but Washington Trails Association, WTA, is a nonprofit that has put, I have no idea how many hours, into building the Cape Horn Trail. Most of that work was done by the WTA. Some of the, I mean, the heavier stuff, where you have to use heavy equipment, like you're going to build a bridge, either, I mean, the stuff where you go under SR-14, that's Washington State DOT, the kind of plank bridges across the streaks, the creeks, I think those are done by the Forest Service.
Mayor, is it appropriate for a motion? There's one. I move that we authorize you to sign this document.
Mr. Mayor, I object to the motion on the basis that we haven't finished our discussion yet. I'd like to respond to a couple of the comments that were made.
You'll certainly have time to do that. Had I done this correctly, we would have entertained a motion before we ever began discussing the item, so I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Council discussion. Dave?
I would defer to anybody else before I respond.
Any other council comments, questions? I think, Brent, part of the, I think your question's difficult to answer because I think it's going to come under a lot of different jurisdictions. Certainly, you know, as we finish the connection even down to the port area, the port's going to have some of that, the city's going to have some of it because it'll be on city streets, the dyke is in the ports area. I don't know if anybody's looked far enough ahead to know who's going to maintain anything or not. They may well have, but...
Yeah, and I'm kind of saying, asking this in response to Councilmember Schumaker's question about the federal government taking control of more land. That isn't necessarily the case, for at least the whole trail.
I would agree with that. Other council discussion? Dave?
I don't believe I said that they would take control of the whole trail area, and I don't know where some of it will go. Based on the presentation that we got from Town to Trails last week, however, I came away with the impression that the land that would be acquired by private means, for which they will be engaging in fundraising, would eventually be turned over to the feds for management. And as I understood his rationale, it was that they don't want to be holding these lands and be responsible for the management of them, which makes sense from their standpoint. As far as the use of the lands, the presentation we got indicated, and I believe the resolution also indicates, that there are overlooks along this trail of the Columbia River. This, I think, is hardly land which is lacking in other uses. Many people, I'm sure, would love to own property with overlooking views of the Columbia River. And if they bought it as private citizens, the land would remain on the tax rolls, which would be one benefit. The other benefit is, and a benefit to local governments and state governments, the other benefit is that we wouldn't have to pay our additional federal taxes for the management of this land. The federal government spends an inordinate amount of money to manage federal lands. They don't do it well, and they pay higher prices than other managers of land of this type to manage it. So they're inefficient. I think the case could be made that they're also ineffective in many cases. There are a lot of public and private partnerships which have done a much better job than the feds in managing public lands, both ecologically and economically. So I, I'm concerned about any turnover of additional land to the feds. Having worked for them for 26 years, I know the animal inside and out. And I'm not, I wasn't then, and I am not now, particularly impressed with the way they operate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other council discussion? Kind Joe?
On page 18 of our packet, it shows the map, and it talks about public land being in the dark green. So is that dark green owned by the federal government or other entities?
It's already publicly held land, essentially.
Publicly, but can you tell...
Essentially, all of it Forest Service.
Forest Service. Which is...
Actually, part of the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
I think we need to get clarification for that, if those are questions that you want answered. I clearly remember part of the conversation last week is that the lands that they hold are still on the tax rolls. Anything that is in government control, government hands, is not going to be on the tax rolls. And I clearly remember that as part of the conversation.
My understanding is if land, national forest lands, are not necessarily publicly owned, they can be privately owned and can national forest lands.
We can certainly strive to get some clarification for some of the questions that have come up this evening.
Seems like we should postpone this and get some more answers. It'd be good. Thank you.
Dave?
May I comment? I appreciate your support. I think I'm sufficiently outnumbered that it won't make a difference. And so I would propose to move to the vote, but I'd rather not have my name attached to it, so if somebody else would care to make the motion...
I've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay.
I would just point out that the key on that map, the lower right-hand corner, all of that green is publicly owned land.
Right. That was my original comment.
Already publicly owned.
Already public. I'm just saying, is that federal, or is that owned by cities? What is that?
I think they indicated last week, did they not, Paul, that the majority of that is federally owned and managed?
I mean, the reason I'm asking is if the federal government already owns this large swath of land, I'm thinking what little bit they're asking for isn't going to make an awful lot of difference to connect the lands. That's why I was trying to say, who owns it? Because your comments were saying we should keep it locally owned and state-owned, if possible. So my question is, is any of this city-owned, or any of it state-owned, or is it all federal? Just to help address some of your questions or concerns.
There's a small state park at Beacon Rock, and that's shown as green.
I would like to say that I, you know, I believe the presentation stated that ninety percent of the land was already acquired for what they need, so they need to acquire another 10%. And I don't believe that any eminent domain was used, so I believe that when they did acquire property, it was the property owner's desire to sell that property, so I could just add that.
Dave?
And my objection is based not solely on the acquisition of the last 10%, but on the idea that we really ought to roll back a good portion of the 90%.
Any other council questions, comments? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the Friends of the Columbia River Gorge, the Columbia Gorge Towns to Trails Vision Statement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Agenda Bill 6212, going into our new business, a public hearing regarding floodplain regulations and clarifications. Mitch?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Agenda Bill, again, is for floodplain, clarifications to the floodplain regulations. I apologize for the sense of deja vu with this presentation, but FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, has updated the flood hazard data, and the NFIP, or the National Flood Insurance Program, it's in your, it's in your, in your Dropbox, I'm sorry, and there's handouts out front, too. The, so NFIP utilizes the information provided by FEMA to provide flood insurance. Consistent with federal regulations, the city of Waschuggle adopted updated maps and studies under ordinance 1725. Those became effective on September 5th, 2012, this year. Subsequently, FEMA had additional clarifications that they wanted the city to make. Those clarifications are to 1604060, the frequently flooded areas. There's existing language that's being moved to a new section. There's repetitive language that's being removed, and there's clarification language added regarding damage to structure. The recommended action before you this evening is to hold a public hearing to take public testimony. If council desires, make a motion to read the ordinance by title only and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Thank you, Mitch. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask any members of the public that wish to speak on the floodplain regulation clarifications. Please step forward to the microphone. Second call for any members of the public that wish to address Agenda Bill 6212. And this is a third and final call for any members of the public that wish to comment on floodplain regulation clarifications. Okay, hearing no speakers, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, your action.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance clarifying the recent amendments to the Waschuggle Municipal Code 16.04.060, critical area, frequently flooded areas, based on a request from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Takes us to Agenda Bill 6312, adopting an ordinance prohibiting the sale, discharge, and use of skylanterns. Chief Schumacher, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I'm bringing before you an ordinance that would restrict the sale, the use of skylanterns. Skylanterns are airborne display devices used for entertainment. They are typically made of paper with a wood or metal frame. A candle, fuel cell, or waxy flammable material or other open flame in the lantern provides for a heat source to heat the air inside the lantern to provide it with lift. When lit, the lantern rises up and floats in the air to create a visual display. Once airborne, it's possible to control the flight of the lantern, excuse me, once airborne, it is impossible to control the flight of the skylantern. They can reach altitudes as high as 1,500 feet and fly in whatever direction the wind sends them. The burn time of the lantern can last anywhere from five to 15 minutes. Eventually, then, they lose their lift and return to earth. It is possible that the heat source in the skylantern will still be active when it lands. Since the route is unpredictable, they could land on something flammable resulting in a possible fire. This ordinance provides the fire marshal with authority to prohibit skylanterns. The proposed ordinance will create, a definition for skylanterns will make it unlawful to sell, use, discharge, or ignite them. Since skylanterns do not meet the definition of a firework, changes to the use can be forced upon recording, instead of the normal one-year waiting period that you have with changes to laws relating to fireworks. The recommended action this evening is to read the ordinance by title only, to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance amending Waschuggle Municipal Code, Chapter 9.20, to add a definition and prohibition against the sale and use of skylanterns within the city limits, and to establish a civil penalty for such violations.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Mr. Mayor, council discussion?
Can I ask, Mr. Schumaker, Schumacher, sorry, what prompted this? Could you go over what prompted the need for this ordinance again? We had a...
We had an incident in the city around the first part of August where a crew responded to reports of ten of these lighted balloons in the air, and they landed in various areas of the city. One landed on a gentleman's roof and started the roof on fire. Another landed in a, some bark, and we had another bark disfired going as well at the time.
Well, that's why I'm going to support this. I generally don't, you know, I used to joke about ordinances that made it unlawful to have too much fun. So I'm, you know, things that restrict people from doing things, you know, I want to have a good reason for doing it, and that's a good reason, so I'm going to support this.
Any other council discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief, before we leave your side, we had a little bit of a fire last night.
Yes, we had a fire up on Fairway Drive. It came in at 1:30 in the morning. They had a heavy fire show on out in the back of the house, and it was just starting to get into the house. The crew had made an aggressive attack. They had two members from CAMs and two from Waschuggle on the engine that arrived, and we had a cooler floor in the house. And they aggressively knocked the fire down in the back, went inside, and kept the fire pretty much limited to the kitchen and dining room, save the rest of the house. There's probably, though, about $150,000.
And no, no working fire alarms in the home?
I believe they did have working fire alarms.
Gotcha.
I'll double-check on that. No sprinklers.
Yeah, I thought the early, the reports in the paper today said that there weren't any working fire alarms either, or smoke detectors.
I know the woman woke up with the crackling of the fire, so maybe that was it, but I'll double-check.
No worries. Commissioner, thank you for East County's help on that fire as well. Thank you guys for also being on the response. Okay, that takes us to Agenda Bill 6412, a resolution... Okay, that takes us to Agenda Bill 6412, a resolution to amend the Council Rules of Procedure, Sections 2.1, council meetings, and Section 2.4, workshops. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. As you know, counsel, we've discussed over the last several weeks amending your rules of procedure to change your meeting times. So the item before you is a resolution that will amend Sections 2.1 and 2.4. And just to summarize, it's a very straightforward change. It would move your regular meetings from first and third Mondays at 6:00 to second and fourth Mondays at 7:00. It would keep your workshops on second and fourth Mondays, and they would then be coincident with your regular meetings, but it would move them up to 5:00 start time, ending at 6:30 as opposed to starting at 6:00 as they do now. So the new meeting schedule would be second and fourth Mondays, 5:00 to 6:30 in work session, and then with a break until 7:00, and then 7:00 you'd be in regular meeting. The only exception to this would be to schedule the first, second, and third Mondays in December, keeping in mind that the mayor has the flexibility to cancel one of, one or two of those meetings if we found those not to be necessary at the end of the year. So the action before you is to read the resolution by title only and then to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. The resolution also provides that this would take effect on Monday, October 22nd, and that would be the transition week when you would have both your workshop and your regular meeting on that fourth Monday.
Dave, one question clarification on Section 2.4. I apologize, I didn't ask this question previously, about the December schedule. December will meet informally in workshop the first, second, and third Mondays.
Correct. Just tracking right along with the regular meetings on first, second, and third. But you can cancel if they're unnecessary. So we just kept it all together.
My question is, the section calls out for workshop, but doesn't call out for an actual council meeting on the first or the third.
In December's it does.
That's in Section 2.
2.1. 2.1 has your regular meetings.
In other words, quick keen into just the workshop portion.
Right. 2.1 covers your meetings, second and fourth, except December for second, third, and then 2.4 covers your workshops. And since they're already on second and fourth, we just had to change the time except for December to get them on first, second, and third.
Gotcha. Okay. Counsel? Joyce?
I understand that both Vancouver and CAMSS meet on this every other week schedule, and it works. I will oppose this. I like the regularity of every Monday at 6:00. I think it works for the citizens of Waschugle better, and it doesn't make a marathon meeting. Or two meetings.
Let's, let's start procedurally here and ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
A resolution amending the city council rules of procedure.
Is there a motion?
I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Counsel, discussion. Joyce?
Oh, I get to say it again?
If you'd like, if not, it's okay.
All right. I think that our consistency, and when we went to meetings, 6:00 every Monday, it was very convenient for the people in Waschugle, and working people could get there. And I like that, and I like that it's regularly on Mondays, knowing that it has, it does work in other cities. I'm still opposed to this for Waschugle.
Paul?
I have the following concerns. I believe it significantly hinders public access, both with the early starting time and the unpredictability. I believe that the inflexible 90-minute schedule will limit useful dialogue. I believe that fatigue will be a factor. I believe these changes cede power from the council to the executive. And we should all ask, do these changes help us do a better job? If not, why go there?
Other counsel discussion? Dave?
Can I ask my colleague for a clarification on why it cedes power to the executive?
Two reasons. The inflexible schedule means that it gives more control to staff presentations and less time for kind of free-flowing discussions. Over the past few years, we've, you know, those of you who went to the budget training, I think you probably saw that there are some cities that have been discussing their upcoming budget since April. And we will get a brief on the workshop, and we have to pass our first budget in November. Where's that discussion? It hasn't taken place. That's an example.
Thank you.
I still don't understand the concern or where you've got power going from the executive, from the council side to the executive side. The council doesn't propose budgets. The executive side proposes budgets, always has, in the timeline called out through state law.
If my colleague would lead, yield, I would help him out here. It cedes power because the executive controls the agenda for the meetings, and that's...
That's incorrect.
I'm fascinated with that.
Between myself and the clerk, we set an agenda. Counsel has every discretion to change that agenda at any given moment.
During the meeting?
Anytime.
Well, this is a newfound power.
No, I believe, I believe it's always been the stance of this administration that any item that council members wish to have brought up will be placed on an agenda. I don't believe that we have ever, ever not brought something forward that's been asked for even by an individual council member.
My comment wasn't an implied criticism. I am serious that this is a new discovery for me, and I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Sorry, Paul, I couldn't help with that one.
The, one of, one of the limitations for counsel, though, in setting an agenda is that we can't talk to each other.
Sure you can.
Only in a meeting.
No, as long as you do not exceed the number of council members that are legally able to discuss an item, you can certainly talk to council members. Like, that's pretty clear in state law.
It's still a serious limitation. I just, I share your, I share your concern that it really is about the control of the agenda.
No, finish your thought.
I still don't, and again, I'm just trying to clarify this for everybody in the room. I still don't see that. Your concern on the rigid 90 minutes, you, previously, you had a fairly rigid two-hour limitation, which pretty much was the same thing. I can remember early on, silly me, nobody had explained to me that we had two-hour limits in workshops, and when we'd go over two hours, I can remember getting chastised because we'd gone beyond our time limit, and people were ready to go home. So in the, in the not-too-distant past, we had a very similar, although slightly different time limitation to us as well. So, Brent? I don't understand either the agenda control issue. You know, if we have a situation where there's a workshop that's, you know, we want to talk about it a little more, I don't see any, any problem with suspending the rules and having our dinner break and then coming back and finishing the workshop a little bit, because the public hearings, we took up this matter at 6:30. We'd gone through, I think, four agenda items plus consent, or three in, in half an hour, and one of them had some discussion. I don't, I just don't see this as a, as an issue, and, you know, I think it's just a more efficient use of our time, rather than come down here for 30-minute meetings, just combine it and do it twice a month.
Okay, Joe?
Paul, do you have your, can you state your fourth one? Do you have them written down? Would you state the fourth one?
The fourth one is, I believe fatigue will be a factor. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's the third one. I believe these changes... Cede power from the council to the executive.
Hmm, that wasn't the one I wanted to address.
Oh, which one?
Well, you've read two out of four. What was the other one?
I believe it significantly hinders public access.
And the other?
I believe the inflexible 90-minute schedule will limit useful dialogue. And then my closing was, we should ask, do these changes help us do a better job?
That's what it was, the closing.
If not, why go there?
Will the changes hinder us? And if they don't, why don't we go there? I, I think in our conversation, I don't see any reason that it will hinder us. We were almost, is accused too harsh of a word of trying to get out of spending the right amount of time and trying to get out of being overpaid and underworked. None of those things are, are true of this situation. And I understand, the one, one thing that I am concerned with is some people may not be able to come as early as 5:00 regularly. I think our discussion, in fact, I know Administrator Scott assured us that if we do go to this, that we would have plenty of advance notice for workshops. If we needed to do something quickly, they would be sure to have it in in time. He's an excellent manager, and I'm not concerned about running out of time. I appreciate Councilmember Boger's comment that we can suspend the rules. We can pretty much do what we need to do to accomplish tasks at hand. And I agree that so often we come down, we might be here an hour. And, and I know that it may sound like we're doing this for selfish reasons, but I know that staff and us, in order to leave or go out of town, we would have to miss a meeting. And that's difficult. I know families are affected, and families have priorities in our lives. Not saying that it has priority over doing city business, but they have priority, and so I would be in favor of this.
Jennifer?
Interesting comments from my colleagues, for sure. We have, not too long ago, changed our times. You know, we used to meet at 5:30 for workshops, and we used to meet at 7:00 for council meetings, and then we voted to change it to 6:00 and make it consistent, and I think...
They were on opposite nights, though?
Yes. They, we always met four Mondays a month, but our workshop times and council meeting times changed. And it hasn't been that long ago. But I have heard from the citizens that they like our new times, they know that they can come at 6:00, no matter what Monday evening it is, and get to talk to the council. And that's important to me. I mean, I empathize and know that other cities have made this work, but, you know, I have to agree with Councilmember Lindsay. This is going to be marathon evenings, it could potentially be marathon evenings, and, you know, it's not only hard on us, but it's hard on the citizens as well. Also have a problem with feeling disconnected or basically reducing potential communications between citizens and council and the administration. I think that if you reduce your, your meeting dates from four to two a month, they're going to feel more disconnected. We don't office here as it is. So, you know, when do we come down to City Hall to kind of check in or to find out what's going on, or that sort of thing? We come for meetings. I've already also expressed a few concerns, you know, throughout these discussions, we've been discussing this for a month. So everyone is already aware of my other concerns, but I think tonight I'm going to have to, to say no.
Dave?
My colleague, Councilman Boger, has expressed some concerns, and he likes this proposal because it goes to two nights a month instead of four. So do I. I'm having difficulty supporting it because I would miss the mayor's charming face and all of you, which I enjoy meeting once a week. I think it keeps us engaged. The other thing is that some of us on this council have been here long enough that, and others longer than I, have seen very, very lengthy discussions. I've seen discussions in which a minimum of six and a maximum of seven, council members not only had points to make, but arguments about issues. Mr. Greenley and I have been participants on different sides on several of them. I'm inclined to support Mr. Greenley's arguments. I, I understand that the way the mayor operates doesn't really transfer power, but these rules may last a long time. I don't know who's going to be the next mayor. I don't know whether they will follow the generous and very workable relationship that, with the council that we've had with you. So on, on that basis, I'm, I'm inclined to vote against this. And I, I appreciate all the work that the staff has done on this. I initially started out in favor of it, Dave, but the more I thought about it, the less I liked it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other counsel discussion? I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call?
Aye.
Councilmember Plinsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenley?
Nay.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Yay.
Councilmember McDaniel?
No.
Councilmember Schumacher?
No.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay, we are now at that point in the agenda for any members of the public that would like to comment. Barbara?
I'm glad, I'm glad we're keeping it the way it is. I appreciate the work that the staff did. I appreciate the thoughts that went into it, and it's always been my fault that to have them separate gives you a chance to talk more. Whether you should talk more sometimes is, you know, like you said, we had been marathon, long meetings, I remember some of them, we figured go 9:00 and 9:30 on some council line. But that's why we're here. And if you're too limited by the time you had a meeting at the beginning and then another one, I'm glad it's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Martha?
I listen to both sides, and I have to tell you, as one of those citizens that tries to go to every dang meeting there is, when I hear marathon, the word marathon meeting, I don't have a lot of sympathy, so forgive me. I would like our citizens to also, and I know the vote's taken, we're passed, but here's my comment. We don't get to see the city of Wasch, or of CAMSS's meetings very often unless we miss yours, and that's a difficult thing. So a lot of us wouldn't be giving up our Mondays, we'd be going to a different meeting. I understand you need time for comment, time to work through things, that's important. However, other cities and other municipalities manage to make it work somehow, and I know there's some flexibility in this process that you have, because you are the council, and yes, you do have control of your agenda. Nice to learn that, isn't it? So that was, that was just my thought, and I apologize, I probably should have come up and said something... I probably should have come up and said something before you took your vote. Maybe it wouldn't have made a difference. But it would be nice to have that opportunity to visit as many meetings as possible, all of your citizens, and not just Washougals. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Any other members of the public wishing to address council? Yes, Maury?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Maury Seacrest. I live in Washougal. I heard the arguments on both sides. And particularly with the arguments against, I was unimpressed. Frankly, listening to the plan that was put forward, I think it was a good plan. I think it was a flexible plan. I think it was a very workable plan. And I am disappointed that you voted it down.
Thank you, Maury. Any other members of the public wishing to address council? Okay, going into Mayor's report, our first item is the proposed preliminary budget for 2013. Jennifer?
Good evening, council and mayor. We're making some changes to some dates here frantically as we had done the presentation with the other schedule in mind. So bear with us as we figure that out. But tonight, we're going to present the very, very preliminary 2013 budget. It's not the... We're calling it the Mambo Meeting for Budget. That'll be on October 22nd where we'll have all of the funds available and have much more detail at that point. These are very preliminary, very high level. We'll get started. The agenda, we have kind of the guidelines that we used for the budget approach. Then we'll go into the budget estimates and then talk about next steps. The timeline for the budget for 2013, July through September, we've been compiling preliminary estimates, watching what the state legislature's done with revenues, looking at how property taxes are coming in, trying to get AV numbers from the assessor's office. Unfortunately, we've been unsuccessful in that aspect of the budget. So those are still very preliminary as well. Tonight is October 1st. We're required by October 1st by law to give you the preliminary budget estimates. No, excuse me, October 22nd, we will have our preliminary budget and message from the mayor and also our third quarter 2012 update. Just to catch you up, I know we just had the second quarter update. But just to give you an estimate of what 2012 is looking like, I've got 2011 actual numbers for revenue and expenditures for the General and Street Fund. The deficit was the approved use of the reserves moving the savings account from... Or the savings from one account to the other two accounts, actually three, because we didn't do the ERNR transfer until 2011, even though it was approved in '10. So that was just merely moving the savings from the general fund reserves to the two, or excuse me, three funds, the ERNR, the Building Contingency Fund, and the Transportation Fund. So when you back those out with our accounting, our surplus for '11 was roughly $310,000. 2012 is looking very good as well. Our revenues are coming in a little bit higher. Property taxes, we'll know more. The revenue estimate is very conservative based on where property taxes are looking to come in. We'll know more at the end of October. But we're expecting to end the year positive again, but by a lesser amount of about $108,000. Again, that's very fluid and could change. We'll update you on the 22nd after the third quarter results come in. For the General Street 2013 budget, and the utilities for that matter, we're using conservative revenue estimates and we've also assumed no use of reserves for the operations. On the expense side, we've held the line on the budgets. In the past, we've asked department heads to actually cut the budget. For this '13 budget, we kept all unknown items the same as '12 and then actually increased the budget for the known increases, such as increase in CRESSA costs, increase in salaries and benefits, to kind of hold the line and keep the status as status quo. So it's still a no-frills budget, but we're holding the line and hoping to move forward. We'll go into more detail. These are just kind of the high level at this point. Some key investments that are included in the 2013 preliminary budget numbers. We're continuing to operationally fund the ERNR Fund, the Building Contingency, and the Transportation Capital Projects Fund. We've included some strategic planning initiative money. As we heard from council, that they would like to have some funds available. And then depending on when the assessed valuation comes in, we may have other opportunities as well. We'll know a lot more once we get those numbers. Questions? Okay, moving right on. Equipment repair and replacement? We have two, just to get everybody, sorry, up to speed. I tried to catch all those for you, Connie Jones. We have a vehicle one as well as a technology computer plan as well. So going into a little more detail with the budget approach for '13, we have a unique situation. We've had a levy lid lift that expires at the end of '12. Fortunately, we have fund balance in Fund 125, which is our EMS surplus account for 2013. And for the newer members on council, we had a levy lid lift of a dime. But with the changes in assessed valuation over the years, it came out to be more than a dime. So we had to pull those excess EMS monies aside because they were to be used for EMS purposes only. So we've been able to keep that fund alive, to keep moving forward as if we've had the lid lift, even though with the decline in the AV, that amount has actually gone down of the new revenue that's coming in. So it's been... It's pretty much equalized to where it should have been, though, for the six-year timeframe that it was approved for. Another point for property taxes, the council banked two years of capacity. And the current revenue estimates includes using that banked capacity. We're also assuming a 5% decline in assessed values and 1.5% increase in new construction. Again, these are preliminary numbers. We're still waiting for the assessor's office. We are going to talk about this a little bit more in detail further down in the presentation. But just to give you context for where the numbers are coming from, those are the assumptions that we used. Depending on where the AV comes in, we may or may not have the ability to use the 1% that is open for you to approve and increase. Most likely, we won't, but just depends on where that AV number comes in. So with that in mind, our general property taxes are roughly $152,000 lower than the 2012 budget. And the EMS levy is about $15,000 lower. Sales tax, we... Paul Lewis gave us some assistance in this number in the past. So we're being pretty conservative. They're coming right on budget this year. So we're using a little bit of an increase. And then, of course, our utility taxes go up in accordance with the rates because we receive more rate money for the utilities and then the taxes applied to that. So that will go up as well. A decrease, as we discussed, with the state shared revenue. I know for sure the liquor funds and then the city assistance funds are another line item that is set by the legislature and they're expecting that to come in lower. I haven't gotten actual numbers on that yet, so we'll update that number as we go along. We're being conservative with the development-related fees as we have in the past. And so overall, the overall General Street increase is 1.25% compared to the 2012 budget. And here's what it looks like. That actually doesn't look too bad up there. The presentation will be in your Dropbox after the meeting, so you can look at this in more detail if you'd like. Again, we talked about the decreases there. So we're estimating roughly $10.7 million in revenues for 2013. Questions, comments? For the expense side of the General and Street Fund, for the labor costs, we have existing contracts for the Police Guild and 307W, so we're following those. The nonrepresented employees, which are mid-managers and department heads, are following the Guild contract. We have negotiations in progress with the IAFF or the firefighter union. We factored in the increase in health insurance costs. Various plans went at varying amounts, so there wasn't just one lump sum amount, so they're all different. But they're all factored in. And we also have a 25% increase in the purse amount that we pay for the legislation. That's outside our control, so we just have to factor those in and move forward with them. So here's how it breaks out between funds. The council costs, for the 2012 numbers, I haven't put the actuals in. It's still based on the budget. But for the 20... Oh, excuse me, the October 22nd meeting, I'll have those compared to where we're at actually for 2012. But for 2013, you'll see the council costs include, hopefully enough this time, for the election costs. And then some of the other anomalies with the general government. In '11, back to that EMS fund, we collect the property taxes in the general fund and then we had to transfer them to the Fund 125 to identify them. So that's why the general government line item's going down. Even though other costs are going up, that transfer's pulled out. So that's why the net effect is a lower amount for the general government. We'll, again, have much more detail at the 22nd meeting to where you'll see how that all pans out. But I just thought I'd give you a heads up on that one. And then the Building Maintenance and Street Fund, or excuse me, Building Maintenance and Parks, we used payroll reports as the employees are currently being charged. So that'll all net out as well. They're still all within the general fund budget between transfers to the Cemetery Fund, Streets, Parks, and Buildings. But they're kind of... They're being allocated differently between '12 and '13. Questions?
Have we heard any kind of hints from the assessor's office as to when they're going to have the number?
No. I tried. There's a new levy specialist that we contacted and tried to get some of those preliminary, even very preliminary, numbers. But they said that they'd have it to us well within the statutory requirements, but I'm thinking that they're looking at that November 30 deadline, not necessarily when we really need it.
Yeah, I just observed that two years ago, there was a lot of conversation about how they were going to get those numbers out much, much quicker.
It wasn't two years ago. That was this year when the assessor was standing in front of us.
Do you know off the top of your head roughly how much the liquor funds are for us?
They are going to be, I had that number, $171,000, I believe in '13, is what they're estimating. In the past, they had been $171-ish. It's roughly a $14,000 decrease. I have the detailed information that I can email you after the meeting if you'd like, a more elaborate discussion.
Yeah, just rough things is all I'm curious. And how about the City Assistance Fund?
I believe they're estimating about $56,000. Again, I can... There's a link to a spreadsheet on DOR's website that we can look at, that I can forward you, that gives the breakout of how it all gets calculated.
Actually, that would be helpful, to have those two numbers in. They don't need to be precise, but just rough estimates.
That's fine.
We provide health insurance through the Employee Benefits Trust and also through Kaiser. The EBT, those rates are going up roughly 6%. It depends on the plan and whether they're retirees and so forth. What's Kaiser going up this year, ballpark?
Currently, Kaiser's going up, I believe 17% was the first number they threw out. The intricacy with Kaiser is that our personnel policies cap it at the AWC rate. So anything that goes above what it would cost through AWC gets passed on to the employee if they choose to stay with Kaiser. So there is a cap. And we're also looking at other plan options perhaps that can bring that cost down. And also joining with the COG, just changing and joining with their plan, putting us in a different pool size, would take that same plan that we currently have down to 14.3 or 8%. So we are looking at those costs to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep those contained.
And then I was just curious, things like CRESSA and SWAT and the walkie-talkies that we pay thousands for, those are already included in the police and fire budgets?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So here's... We try to forecast out a few years past what we're currently budgeting for to have the big-picture view. And to some of the new council members, this might be a little bit of a surprise. To the existing council, should look pretty familiar from what we've looked at in the past. '14 is the year that the EMS Fund 125 is no longer able to assist the general fund and we don't have the levy lid lift. So that's what we've been looking at as a target. But as you can see, '12 is hopefully going to end positively. Knock on wood, we're on track. And then '13, we're budgeting. We have a slight surplus at this point. Again, it depends on where AV comes in. Should AV come in better than we're budgeting, that surplus would obviously get bigger and that increases that other opportunity that we talked about earlier for key investments in the community. And then '14, '15, and '16 will be a discussion that we'll need to start having in the near future to determine how we're going to deal with those years.
The ERR and the Building and Transportation Funds, are they going to be funded from reserves or from revenues?
The operationally are being funded in the revenue side. The only reserve usage was to seed them initially. But in '12 and '13, we've operationally budgeted to add to those funds through existing revenues, not reserves.
Thanks, Cohen.
Okay. Just for a pretty graph, we put that in for you. That brings us back to the property tax discussion. Over the past two years, we've brought forth resolutions to bank capacity. And I think I'm turning this over to you for this discussion.
Thank you, Jen. As you'll recall, council, due to the nuances of our levy lid lift and the declining AV, there was a differential between our highest lawful levy and where we were capped because of the rate and the declining AV. And that provided an option for the council to preserve opportunities to keep that capacity. And so the last two years, you did that. And the sum total of that banked capacity is $83,000. Now that the lift is expiring, that capacity is available to you. And according to the assessor's office, the way that you would capture that is by including that in the total ad valorem property tax number that you would pass. And you would not need to take any specific, unique action with respect to that because you preserved the capacity to include that in the overall number. However, as we discussed with you when you passed those resolutions, we told you that it was an optional thing that you could do and that in preserving that capacity, you were not necessarily including that in the levy amount. So you do not have to include that $83,000 in the property tax levy amount, but you have the ability to do so. For the sake of this preliminary estimate of revenues, we have made the assumption that you would do that as a place to start the conversation. You do not have to do that. But the budget estimates that you have are inclusive of that $83,000.
Can I ask you a question? If we took advantage of this bank capacity, what would be the net effect of the property owner's tax bills with the levy lid lift going away? And then us taking advantage of that bank capacity, do you look at that?
It'd be difficult to say on an individual taxpayer basis, you know, based upon AV and what changes on an individual property, owner's property and their other assets if they're commercial. However, the overall levy, inclusive of this bank capacity, is a lower amount. And we have a slide that will show that, community-wide. Oh, you just switched to it. I can't do that math. I can't do that math in my head, but I think that's 100 and 120...
150.
150. So the difference, the difference in the levy amounts year over year is that our property tax levy will be smaller, and this is the best that you can do, given the minus 5% assessed valuation that we are assuming.
Can I ask a question about that? Have you made any assessment of how realistic that is? Because I, are we getting a sense that the market's bottoming out then?
As you recall, the assessment that informs our 2013 property taxes is about a year or more in lag. The assessments that we all received in the mail over here in the last couple of months are January 2012 assessments, when they were doing that work, it's probably third, fourth quarter of '11 culminating, you know, early this year. So I would say that some of the recovery that we've seen, and anecdotally, I think we all have evidence that there's some recovery in property values. When they put the dipstick in, so to speak, January 12, I'm not so sure that the slope wasn't declining. We want to be very conservative for you in providing these estimates. We think that that's the prudent approach to take and to not program expenditures making assumptions that are too bullish on the revenue side. And with that in mind, we are using the most conservatively low assessed valuation possibility from the data that's out there, and we talked with Paul Lewis about this, we had a range. So we're very hopeful that the number will be better than that. Some communities are projecting a little bit rosier picture than that. Last year, we recall, we were at minus eight in our preliminary estimates, and it actually ended up being about minus two, and then with new construction, we ended up somewhere between zero and minus one. I can't remember exactly where that was. We're hopeful that that would happen again, but we don't want to count on that in giving you the initial estimates. So this difference in $83,000 spread over the assessed valuation. I didn't do that computation, we didn't do that. It's a, it's not a significant amount, but nonetheless, it's bank capacity that is available to you, but it's not automatic, so to speak. You have an option with that. We are including it because I think that you'll see in the mayor's budget, when it's fully and formally presented preliminarily on October 22, that we would be proposing that you capture that bank capacity. And then, depending upon where the AV comes in, and if we even know by October 22, we would have information to share with you about whether or not you have any other opportunities on the property tax side that you would want to look at and what we might advise in that It is troubling, the ambiguity that we all face as local governments in the state, as we wait for this number and we're doing our budget planning, and you have, statutorily, you have to make decisions before you know one of the key components of your revenue stream. It's very frustrating, and there are some special districts that this is really the exclusive source of revenue, very difficult position to be in. I hope that we're too conservative at the end of the day, councilman, but we'll see. And let's see, this slide that you already had there, this just kind of gives you a feel for the volatility that we have faced as a result of declining AV in the Great Recession and then our lid lift expiring. The overall levy that we can receive from the taxpaying base in our community will be down in 2013, keeping in mind that our lift is expiring, so that a chunk of that is a function of that. Not huge numbers, but nonetheless, they're negative numbers.
That brings us to the utility funds. On the revenue side, we have the rate plan that you approved in place, set up to go. Water's going to increase 13%, sewer scheduled for 26.5%, and then the storm is set at 14.5%. On the expenditure side, we held the line as well with the O&amp;M side, and then we're following the capital facilities plans on the capital side. So here's how it's panning out. If you recall from our rate study discussion back in, gosh, 2010, we did a, instead of having large increases and then little decreases in the rates, we made them steady across as we, as best we could. So that's why the storm water has a negative revenue, cash flow. It's because of the flattening of the rates that we did with that study, and so there's fund balance built up to take care of that. That brings us to next steps. The additional review and revision, we need input from negotiations for fire. Obviously, we need the numbers from the assessor's office. We've heard varying dates, there's a couple that are thrown out there. I put 1031 in, because that was one that I heard recently. I don't know, I'm assuming it's going to be closer to November 15. I think that's when we got them last year. And then analysis of the third quarter financial report. We're presenting the preliminary budget on the 22nd at the workshop. We'll have all fund information available. We'll discuss in more detail the ad valorem tax levy, that option that you have before you. We'll have the document available for the public, and I think that last bullet may change. We were anticipating setting the public hearings at that point with the new proposed council meeting, but since that didn't pass tonight, we'll have a revised schedule for you at a later date. On the 13th, which is now a different date, one moment, please. We will have a workshop, the 13th will be a workshop where we can discuss the ad valorem tax levy and budget. We'll probably also schedule on the November 5 meeting, a discussion item at the regular meeting. That way, we can discuss it and have the appropriate number of discussions prior to the actual hearings. We'll hold the hearings on the 19th, which is a meeting, not a workshop. And then, at that time, once we hold the public hearing, the budget could be approved after that, or it could be continued to the 3rd, the 10th, not the 10th, excuse me, the 3rd and the 17th. Going back a slide here, you are required by law to approve the ad valorem tax levy resolution by November 30. So that is something that, if not done on the 19th, we would have to schedule a special meeting for that to occur, given the new, staying with the way the meetings are currently being held. Again, the continued states, and that's it. Questions, comments?
Just a question. There are revenue limitations on property taxes. I may have this wrong, but in my mind, there are three limitations. One is the lid lift goes away, and we lose the authority for that also, do we not? Or could we pass it?
Have to go to the voters.
With the voters?
Yes, you could. If there is capacity to lift in the rate, then you can lift. That's one of the topics that will need to be part of the broader conversation for addressing the structural deficit, if you would, that faces all communities, that is going to manifest itself beginning in '14 with that lift expiration and the Fund 125 balance being used up. That is one option. It's something that the community was favorable, favorably disposed to previously, and I think that would be possibly an obvious option to look at because it'd be a replacement. There are other options as well. So that is sort of a limitation, I guess.
Then the other thing is there's a statutory limitation of $3.90 per thousand assessed. Is that correct?
$3.60.
$3.60.
Right.
And that's the real limitation that we're up against?
We share a little bit of that with our friends at Fort Vancouver Regional Library District. So I think effectively, if they're at their max, 50 cents, 310 is a number that we would use, but it is 3.60 together, correct?
And then the other limitation is that you can raise your tax revenue, your levy on existing properties, no more than 1%. Actually, it's the lesser of 1% or the CPI.
Yeah, the IPD implicit price, the implicit price deflator.
Of course, it's deflator.
Right. And this year, the 1% would be governing the, but it may not be available, depending upon if AV is still going in a negative direction, it wouldn't be available. Yes, that 1%, that's a question, before things turned upside down in property and assessed values as communities began to go into the decline here over the last several years, that was a perennial question for city councils across the state, is would you take the councilmanic 1% increase in your levy? It's not a rate, it's not a 1% increase in the tax rate, it's a 1% increase in the total amount of levy that's available to you. What that would mean individually for individual taxpayer is a function of their assessed, their own assessed value and the like. It does then back calculate to a rate, which we compare to those lids that you described. So if we collected $10 in year one, you get $10, you could collect $10.10 in year two, councilmanically. You don't have to do that. You could, you could pass a lower levy if you wanted to. I mean, you just can't go more than the 1%.
My memory is that we have not used the 1% in at least the past four years. I don't remember about the fifth.
I don't recall about five, but I believe you're correct, and there was the banking of capacity that happened the last two years.
Right.
Right. Which was not really a function of the 1%, it was more a function of the dynamics of having a lid lift in place.
That's all, thank you.
Other council questions? Dave?
Just a brief comment. Thank you for what you're all going through. I know this is an agony. I've been through budget years like this, and I know it's a long, it's a year-long process to prepare a budget. It begins when the last budget gets implemented. So thank you for what you're going through and for great results.
Any other questions, comments?
The other item that I have for you under Mayor's Report this Saturday, October 6, we do have the dedication of Hartwood Park at 1:00 PM. If you need any information on that, please contact Suzanne Grover. She's putting together the agenda for that event. I believe she's planning on about an hour and a half of activities up there, so not saying that everybody has to stay for that long, but if you were intending to go and hoping that it might be a short one, it's going to be a little bit longer with all the folks that we had involved in that one. Any items from council members? Trace?
Well, I was at the Hartwood Park Boat Ramp Launch on Saturday, and it's very nice. And I just want to bring attention again to Suzanne Grover. She's amazing in what she's doing with the parks in our city, and I personally believe that important, so I think this is just, it's really, it's good. And I just want to mention, Steve's guided adventures was the first boat to go down the ramp, and was the water too shallow that he couldn't go on in?
Well, he nipped his tires.
Yeah, okay, and he came back out, but it was a very nice occasion in our lovely park.
Thank you for those comments. Other council members? Brent?
Attended the RFA meeting, last, Regional Fire Authority meeting last Tuesday night, and to my surprise, I've been tasked with getting, I'm the least experienced on the council, but I'm tasked with getting the input from all the Washego stakeholders involved in the consolidation, continued consolidation, or pulling the plug on consolidation. We don't know for sure what, how this is all going to end up. I doubt that we'll pull the plug on it, but there are many variations that we can go forward on, and I'll be chatting with each of you and keeping it to myself so we don't have a public meetings issue. Thank you.
Paul?
I was also at the boat ramp launching, and yes, the water is way too low. You cannot get a drift boat down the river now. We have at least three guide operations operating out of Washego. Steve Leonard is one, John Gain is another, and the third one, the name eludes me, but he's down at Sixth Street, just this, just north of C Street. We have three fishing tackle stores in town, Buy Mart, the Chevron, also known as Jimbo's over at SR14, and also there's a place called Northwest Sporting Goods, which I think actually technically is in Camas. It's a 329 Lechner, over close to KFC. The other thing to say is Suzanne Grover, formerly Batch Helder, has done a remarkable job. She has become quite the grantsman. This project has been, she's been working on getting funding for this project for at least three years that I know about, and probably before that. We got some funding from RCO and WWTR, and I wish I could tell you what those mean. Washington, I just don't remember. But this, these kinds of projects are expensive. This project's, the bid was $126,000 because they have all kinds of issues going into a fish-bearing stream, especially one that has endangered species in it. So, but we have a brand-new boat ramp, it's board concrete, it goes actually, at this point, well below the existing water line, and I've never seen the water lower. So, great job and special thanks to Suzanne.
Dave?
I just wanted to comment that as the Chair of the Regional Fire Authority Planning Committee, my philosophy is to get everybody involved. So Brent, welcome to the fray, and thank you for your stepping up to the...
Well, I have to, I have to warn you that I've been approached to replace Ben Bernacki, so...
You have my sympathy.
Any other items from council?
I wouldn't say that you were the least experienced here either. You may have been around the least.
Jennifer?
Yes. Last Tuesday night, I attended the Washego School Board meeting, as I do twice a month, and just a little highlight, they have added a public information coordinator by the name of Renee Carroll, who she is tasked with developing marketing and communications for the school district, promoting public awareness of all of their activities and programs and media relations. Basically, overall, she's to increase the positive exposure for the district, and I think it's a wonderful thing. Not that we don't get proper coverage from the local newspaper, but I think, you know, we could use a few more stories in our local newspaper. That wouldn't hurt. What else? Oh, I have a question about economic development. When we went through the budget list of expenses and I saw economic development, that reminded me of a question about our QEDA, and I don't know if we need to get an update, but I would like to know what's happening with the QEDA and, you know, how the meetings have been going, and maybe a report of, you know, what they're doing there and so on and so of, you know, what they're doing there, and so on and so forth. I don't know if that's something that was in our contract, or if we had talked about getting a yearly or quarterly report.
Dave, when is Paul coming to do the question?
We have Paul tentatively scheduled to come in on our workshop on November 13. And he will, he does have an obligation to report to us annually pursuant to our professional services agreement, or at least the QUITDA organization has that responsibility. So he's making the circuit between the three partners during the fourth quarter of the year. It worked well for us to do it on the 13th, and our agreement scopes out exactly what needs to be reported. So he'll be doing that on the 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items from council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.